Like to call the meeting to order, October 5th. At this time, roll call of Aldermen.
Alderman Consilla?
Here.
Alderman Hazel?
Here.
Alderwoman Duco?
Here.
Alderman Pusa? Alderman Pusa? Alderman Randall?
Here.
Alderman Ferguson? Alderman Anthony?
Here.
Alderman Ovian?
Here.
Alderman Dillman?
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderwoman Steele?
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler?
Here.
Alderman Elmore?
Here.
Alderman Weigant? Alderman Weigant? Alderman Wiggington?
Here.
Alderman Barfield?
Here.
Alderman Weigant? Okay, so I don't have Weigant?
Alrighty, if Alderman Weigant comes in, please let us know. Okay, okay, very good. Um, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'll call for the department heads.
City Treasurer Hart?
Here.
City Attorney Horner?
Here.
Police Chief Bill Clay?
He's off today.
Okay, sorry.
Ice Can't's here.
Fire Chief Tom Poor?
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitre?
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn?
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole?
Here.
Director of Waste Water Randy Smith?
Here.
Director of Residential and Commercial Development Anissa McCaskill?
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman?
Here.
Director of IT Scott Markovich? City Engineer Michael Belloff?
Here.
Human Resources Manager Emma Qualls?
Here.
Okay, Matt Ice Can't, you on the line for Chief Clay?
I am.
Okay, he is. Okay, very good. Chief Clay's off today and tomorrow. Uh, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, for those who are able, if you would, please stand and join me in the pledge.
Muted.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm muted.
Thank you very much. Okay. We have no public hearing this evening. Uh, public participation. I will now open public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the city council tonight? They just need to speak up now. Let me know. Keep your comments to two to three minutes. And hopefully it's on a belvede topic. Anybody this evening?
Michael Hackburg?
Yes, sir.
Um, last Saturday, I received a letter from Home Field Energy stating that if I don't opt out, I will have my electric supplier switch to Home Field Energy at the end of this month. Last April, Home Field Energy mailed a similar opt-out notices. During the May 4th meeting, council meeting, I addressed having to continually opt out. I thought it had been resolved that residents that who had previously opted out and chose their own provider of electricity didn't have to continually opt out from these notices. I've already opted out by changing my electric supplier company to somebody other than Home Field Electric. I don't want to have to continually opt out. With the mail service of today, I'm shocked they even received this notice. What if the postal service fails to deliver my once again opt-out request? Home Field also demands that I provide personal information in order to opt out from their offer. Why should the city council require that I provide my personal information to a company that I have no intention of doing business with? Every company that has my personal information in a database is one more opportunity for identity theft. Home Field Energy should, like all other electric suppliers, just mail their offer to me and allow me to choose my own supplier. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening? Hearing none, I will close public participation. Whoa, is there somebody?
Yes, sir.
Who is this?
My name, my name is Yazeed Abdul-Zainah. I am presenting Shell Gas Station on 9618 West Main. Uh, there has been, uh, we just, you know, wanted to be here at this meeting, uh, you know, to, to, for the voting on, uh, a, you know, Article 11B uh, from the zoning board of appeal. If you need us, you know, if you need our hearing again, if you need to hear where we stand with this subject.
Okay, I, I believe there's been a request to table that for two weeks, sir. And I, isn't that correct?
One item. There's two.
Well, two items? Okay, okay, one item. The second part?
Correct. The first part is not being.
Yes, the second part.
Yes, okay. And your comments, sir?
The comments is, sir, that, uh, our comments was in the meeting and I'm just repeating it again. Uh, we are, you know, too close to each other to have, you know, convenience store. Plus, we are serving this, uh, probably, you know, the, the community for the past three years. And during COVID, we were there and we have WIC and we have, uh, you know, food stamps. You know, we accept WIC, we accept food stamps and we're in the process of running the kitchen. I think we're satisfying the community, uh, to what, to what they need from having convenience store in this area. Plus, you know, that, uh, having another convenience store, this also will create, it will create some kind of chaos as far as the traffic going, you know, back and forth. And, uh, they're probably gonna use our parking lot because we have a space more than the other when we float to the building.
Okay. Very good, sir. Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone for public participation? Hearing none, I will close public participation.
Yes. Yes, I'm Doris Radley.
Yes.
And we're, we're trying to get to business at 9700 West Main in which the gentleman was just speaking about.
Uh huh.
And just want to make a note and to clarify some things. We are not trying to get, um, you know, cause any chaos on the property. Most of our business will be carryout and delivery only. We don't have a walk-in, we will have a walk-in facility, but it will only be for the purpose of carrying out, uh, our product. Um, as for as anything else WIC and whatnot, it, we're still trying to service our citizens, our people with disabilities and those without transportation.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for your comments, ma'am, okay? Okay. Anybody else for public participation? Okay, I'm gonna close public participation. Right now, number seven, we move on to presentations, recognitions, and appointments. The first thing I want to do tonight is recognize the character word of the month for the month of October. The word is responsibility. Willingness to be accountable for your own actions without blaming others. Okay, responsibility. The next, uh, if there's no objections, I have two appointments. Is it okay if I make them together?
Yes.
Okay, these are two appointments coming from the mayor. The first one is the, I would like to recommend Ryan Alexander to fill the vacancy on the Electrical Commission left by Jason Klein to serve the remaining of a four-year term expiring August 2023, serving in the capacity as a representative of Electrical Utility Company. The other appointment I'd like to make tonight is to recommend the reappointment of Dave Martenson to serve a three-year term on the Board of Fire and Police Commission. Do I hear somebody to make that, those appointments?
Hazel, so moved.
Hazel, and I hear a second.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. We have a motion by Hazel, a second by Schaefer, to approve the two recommendations under 7B and under 7C. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Let me think. Should we go with this trash now or later?
Can you, can you please mute your phones if you're not part of the roll call vote? Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Alright.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer? Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi, hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
And let me just check. Alderman Weigant, did you get on the call? Okay, motion carries.
Motion carries. At this time, we go to, uh, like to ask for a motion to approve the city council meeting and the executive session meeting minutes of September 21st, 2020. Is there a motion?
Wiggington, so moved.
Wiggington, do I hear a second?
Steel?
Steel. Motion by Wiggington, second by Steele, to approve the city council meeting minutes and then the executive session minutes of September 21st. Are there any additions or corrections? Roll call.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa? Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. This time, I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and disbursements in the amount of $853,502.87 and the payroll in the amount of $801,790.80. Do I hear a motion?
Anthony, so moved.
Anthony?
Schaefer, second.
Schaefer seconded. We have a motion, a second, to approve the claims and the payroll. Are there any questions about either one of those two items? Roll call.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman? Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Motion carries. Go to number 10, and I'm sorry, uh, 11A. Um, Administration, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve city attorney has provided a quick claim deed to donate the property at Walter Street, parcel number 08070413008 to St. Clair County Housing Authority. This was a lot in which we tore down a house a couple of years ago.
It was a church, actually.
It was actually a church. That was right, it was actually part of Remick Hardware. It was the old, uh, it was, it was, it used to be a Methodist church. And, um, we tore that down and instead of cutting the grass all the time, we have asked the housing apartment, which is right next door, if they were interested. So they said yes, and, uh, that's what this quick claim deed would be about. Do I hear a motion?
Anthony, so moved.
Anthony, do I hear a second?
Schaefer?
Schaefer made the second, so we would be, uh, this, this lot that we're currently own and currently cutting the grass, we would donate it to St. Clair County Housing Authority. Everybody understand the motion? Roll call.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Motion carries. 11A2. I'd like to ask for a motion to waive the formal bidding procedure and accept the lowest quote from Geisler Roofing, Inc. in the amount of $12,930 to replace the roof at 8800 West Main Street, the West End Police Station. As you know, the building had been empty for four and a half years. And it wasn't, excuse me, it wasn't until we got back in there, uh, tidying up and cleaning stuff out, uh, for St. Vincent de Paul to get in there. Uh, Kenny had reported to me that, and, and so did the maintenance crew, that there were numerous leaks. We got, uh, two roofing, uh, quotes. We had Taylor Roofing out there and we had Geisler. Taylor was almost, not quite, but almost double the price. But this is for a new roof. Um, it's, it hasn't been, I don't know that we ever put one on the whole time the city has owned the property. We patched it, the guys told me several times. But like I said, with nobody in that building, it was leaking quite a bit. So this would put a new roof at 8800 and probably take care of the next 20 years. So the motion would be to approve the lowest quote from Geisler, Inc. in the amount of $12,930 to replace the roof. Do I hear a motion?
Wiggington, so moved.
Wiggington and Duco, do I hear any questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
Do we have any kind of a mold, do we have any kind of a mold problem in there?
No, 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 thank goodness, we caught it. But there's, there's no mold whatsoever. And once they get the roof replaced, there's probably about six ceiling tiles they're gonna pop out and put new ones in. But other than that, it's, uh, we got it in time, okay?
Alright, good, great.
Does anybody else have a question? Yeah, there's no mold. Okay.
No, no.
What, sir?
The ceiling, whether any tile was scalded, discolored.
There's only a handful, and soon as that they do get it fixed, Kenny's gonna have his guys pop a couple new ones in.
Yeah.
Okay, the, uh, our guys put a coat of paint on the, in the rooms and St. Vincent de Paul put down all-new flooring. Uh, they, they paid to have all-new flooring in the building, uh, because the carpeting was all badly stained and buckled up from when the state police, uh, the, uh, when they had the auto theft task force in there for those years. So, uh, they helped us out by putting in the new flooring. It's a wood laminate and it looks really nice. So, uh, this will take care of the roof and we should be in good shape for a long time. So with those questions answered, roll call.
Randall?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Motion carried. We go to 11A3. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the low bidder, Rooter's Asphalt, in the amount of $492,632.22 for the Dawn Heights Metal Dale Improvements. This is, uh, from CDBG and, uh, this will be, uh, a, a, a rotamill and overlay of many of the roads, almost all of them, in that area. Uh, you will see a little later on where we felt a little bit short. There's a resolution to make up the difference out of TIF 'cause it's in TIF 3. So at this time, is anyone willing to make a motion for this CDBG project?
Steal, moves.
Steele and Rothweiler was a second. Steele and Rothweiler in Ward 6. Any questions? Roll call.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Motion carried. 11A4, I'd ask for a motion to approve Cascasquia Engineering Group to provide construction inspection and testing services for the Dawn Heights Metal Dale subdivision in the amount of $45,000 out of TIF 3. Do I hear a motion for that?
Rothweiler moves.
Rothweiler, do I hear Steele, Steele made a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ovian? Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Motion carries. We go to zoning board of appeals and, uh, Jenny, the second one, 11B2 is actually requested to be? So if everybody understands that 11B2 has been requested, uh, to the clerk's office today to table that second part, uh, but 11B1, 11B3, 11B4, 11B5, and 11B6, can I have the clerk read these all together from zoning?
Actually, Mayor, could we, 11B1, I would really like to, um, have that separated out.
Okay, well, let's start off with 11B1. We'll have the clerk read it and we'll go from there.
39 September 20, Sylvester Radley. A request for a use variance to reestablish two dwelling units on the second floor at 9700 West Main Street, parcel 02350210040. Located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable section of the zoning code 162.570, Ward 8, zoning board unanimously recommended approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I would like a motion, I would like to make a motion to be denied.
So we have a, a, a motion from Alderman, um, Wiggington. Is there a second?
Barfield, second.
A motion by Barfield. Is there a discussion on this motion?
My discussion, Mayor, is, um, I, I'm just not clear on everything that's gonna be going on in this old building. When we voted on this council originally, it was going to be a catering service. I've heard nothing about the catering service, but I've heard about apartments, print shops, convenience stores. I have to be very truthful. I'm really not sure what's going on in there. There is an inside entrance to those apartments, but no outside. In fact, the kitchen goes in there. Uh, and these apartments in that old building, and that building could go up in a heartbeat, and I'm sure Chief Poor is listening in, um, those people would never get out of it. I just don't feel, I feel very uneasy of that we're really not getting a true direction on what exactly is all gonna be going in there. And I'm very concerned about having these apartments above a potential kitchen.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have? Yes?
I'm, I'm, I have a question.
Who is this talking now?
This is Hazel.
Okay.
Hazel, I have a question.
Go ahead.
We tabled the, we, okay, we have tabled 11B2, which deals with the, um, preparation, food preparation. I believe that this request at this moment is just for the two dwellings on the second floor, regardless of what they do on the bottom. And so is there a reason to deny, just solely based on the two dwelling units on the second floor of this building? I haven't heard a reason to, to agree with the denial. And so I'd like further explanation as to why we would be voting against dwelling units in 9700 West Main. So Alderman Hazel, uh, the mayor asked for a motion. I needed. He asked for discussion and I discussed it. So you can do with it what you want, but that's my point and that's my discussion.
Anybody else?
I don't really answer.
This is Alderman Consilla.
Yeah.
I might ask if, uh, Alderman Wiggington would consider postponing this until the other one comes up?
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Well, I, I, hold on.
Hold it, did you?
My name is, is Mr. Radley.
Hold it, Mr. Hold it, Mr. Radley, you got, Mr. Radley?
We can't talk.
You, Mr. Radley, this is the council's turn to talk now. You talking?
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, uh, Mr. Wiggington, Alderman Wiggington, did I hear you say you would agree to postpone them both?
Absolutely.
Okay, so Mr. Alderman Consilla, are, are, who made the original motion? Wiggington and?
Wiggington and Barfield.
Are you willing to change your motion to postpone both of them to the next meeting?
Yes, I would, uh, change my motion for A, uh, B, 11B1, 11B2, of course, 11B2's tabled anyway, uh, for the next met, uh, meeting, until we can get further information about, uh, the approach and exactly what's gonna be going on. How many businesses are gonna be operating out of this one building? I would be more than happy to change my motion until we get more information through, um, uh, Anissa, uh, and, uh, so we can vote on it again at the next meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone. Okay, so we have a motion to postpone and Alderman Barfield, are you in, are you in agreement?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we have a motion to?
I got a big problem.
I'm sorry?
Yes, my, my big concern is the safety issue for the, uh?
Well, and I? And I do think there was a, one point I heard there and I think the fire chief needs to talk about that. If there's gonna be a kitchen on the first floor and then we have to make sure that they're well aware if we're looking at residential upstairs, that is a true point. Uh, so let's, let's just table it for?
Mayor, this, Mayor, this is Tom Forio, may I speak?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mayor, all I would say to that is, just like with any commercial occupancy application, um, the whole building to be taken into effect and we won't approve anything that doesn't meet codes. So that'll all be looked at, you know, whenever we have plans for the entire building.
Okay, but I think, uh, I see what they're saying is, uh, this is partly on a zoning and I think they oughta, they, they wanna make sure they have a handle on exactly what the uses are gonna be. So we'll, we'll table it two weeks.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we'll try, we'll try to talk to you guys and staff as well and, and get ahold of Mr. Radley and see if we can't get a more clear, uh, definition of what his plans are. So we have a motion to table for at least two weeks. Uh, we have a second, roll call.
Dillman?
Hi.
Shaffer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Okay, those two items are tabled. Is there objection for going for reading the rest of the zoning cases together?
No.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you wanna do that?
Yep. Eleven B three, forty-one September twenty, David Gross and Rachel Fritz, a request for an area bulk variance to establish two parcels below the required minimum lot of ten thousand square feet by adjusting the shared boundary of parcel number zero-eight-two-two-zero-three-four-eight-zero-zero-nine-one-twenty, Moskuta Avenue, and zero-eight-two-two-zero-three-four-eight-zero-one-zero-one-twenty-two, Moskuta Avenue. Applicable sections of the zoning code one-six-two-point-zero-nine-two and one-six-two-point-five-seven-zero, Ward seven. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval. Eleven B four, forty-three September twenty, Lynette Morris, a request for a use variance to reestablish a two-family dwelling at thirty-one eighteen West Main Street Parcel, zero-eight-one-seven-zero-three-zero-eight-zero-one-eight, located in a C-one light commercial district. Applicable, applicable section of the zoning code one-six-two-point-five-seven-zero, Ward three, zoning board unanimously recommended approval. Eleven B five, forty-four September twenty, Oblate Shrines and Renewal Centers Incorporated, a request for a special use permit for our liquor license for the Shrine Banquet Center at four forty-two South Damazanad Drive. Parcel number zero-seven-zero-four-zero-four-zero-one-zero-one-one, located in a C-two heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code one-six-two-point-two-four-eight and one-six-two-point-five-one-five, Ward eight. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval. Eleven B six, forty-five September twenty, Oblate Shrines and Renewal Centers Incorporated, a request for a special use permit for outdoor dining for the Shrine Banquet Center at four forty-two South Damazanad Drive. Parcel number zero-seven-zero-four-zero-four-zero-one-zero-one-one, located in a C-two heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code one-six-two-point-two-four-eight and one-six-two-point-five-one-five, Ward eight. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval.
I'd like to ask if there's a motion, uh, to approve eleven B three, eleven B four, eleven B five and eleven B six and have the proper ordinances drawing. Do I hear a motion?
Elmore?
Elmore? Who was the second? Duco? Elmore and Duco, are there any questions about what was just read by the clerk? Hearing none, roll call.
Shaffer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Those motions carry coming from zoning. At this time, we go down to oral reports, communications, and I believe there's four of them. Is there a problem reading them as a group?
Oh.
Okay, I will once again ask our clerk.
Twelve A, Evening of Worship, ten-eleven twenty twenty, ten-eighteen twenty twenty, ten-twenty-five twenty twenty, and eleven-one twenty twenty. Request from Saint Paul United Church of Christ to close North First Street between West B and West C Streets on Sunday, October eleventh, October eighteenth, October twenty-fifth and November first, three P M. to five P M. Additional requests barricades. Twelve B, Fire Department Chili Cookoff, ten-twenty-four twenty twenty. Request of change of date and time from I A F F Local fifty-three to hold contactless fire department chili sales on Saturday, October twenty-four twenty twenty, ten A M. to six P M. at eleven-twenty-five South Illinois Street. All COVID-nineteen mitigation requirements to be fol- to be followed. Originally approved for October tenth. Twelve C, Club Escapade, ten-seventeen twenty twenty, ten-twenty-four twenty, twenty? Ten-thirty-one twenty twenty. Request from Club Escapade Metro East Pride to open establishment with DJ and drag show performers, two to three, on Saturday, October seventeenth twenty twenty, with a rain date of October twenty-fourth twenty twenty, and Saturday, October thirty-first twenty twenty, three P M. to eleven P M. Street closure request of North Second from Main Street to entrance of parking lot, eight A M. to eleven-thirty P M. Additional request of barricades and no parking signage. COVID-nineteen mitigations to be followed. Twelve D, Celebration of Life, ten-eighteen twenty twenty. Request from Dave Pusa and family to hold a Celebration of Life for Jane Pusa on Sunday, October eighteenth twenty twenty, twelve P M. to three P M. Street closure request, eleven-thirty A M. to four P M., West A Street, from North Twenty-first Street to North Twenty-third Street. Additional request of three trash toders, COVID-nineteen mitigation to be followed.
Do I hear a motion to approve those four, uh, uh, communications?
Duco?
Duco and who was the second?
Steel.
Steel. Motion by Duco, second by Steel to approve those four communications just read by the clerk. Any questions? Roll call.
Steele? Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian? Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Shaffer?
Hi.
Motion's approved. We have no petitions. We have one resolution. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution thirty-three ninety-two. Do I hear a motion?
Rothweiler moves.
Rothweiler, do I hear a second?
Shaffer?
Shaffer made the second. Motion in a second to read by title only, Resolution thirty-three ninety-two. Roll call.
Rothweiler?
Hey.
Did he say, oh, I'm sorry. Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Shaffer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Motion carries. Would you please read the, in, by title only?
Resolution thirty-three ninety-two, a resolution of support for the City of Bellevue Program year twenty nineteen, application for community development block grant funding.
Do I hear a motion to re, uh, approve Resolution thirty-three ninety-two?
Shaffer made the second.
Shaffer and, Shaffer and Pusa? Duco, Duco, okay? Th- this is, uh, this is what supplements the balance of the, of the, uh, CDBG for Dawn Heights. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Are there any other questions? Roll call.
Elmore? Can you please mute your phone? Elmore?
Hi, hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Shaffer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Motion carries. We have ordinances this evening, ladies and gentlemen, but I take it, um, fifteen A, we would want to table. So, uh, can we get a motion, first of all, to table fifteen A?
I'll move.
Who is that?
Wiggington.
Wiggington, do I hear a second?
Barfield's second.
Barfield's second. Is there any questions or comments on tabling? If they're here none, roll call on the table.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Shaffer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Motion carried. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to read by title only. Ordinances eighty-eight seventy-six, eighty-eight seventy-seven, eighty-eight seventy-eight and eighty-eight seventy-nine. And if there's no exception, uh, if there's no one, uh, having a problem with it, how about as a group?
As a group. Yes.
So you're making the motion, Alderman Wiggington?
Yes, sir.
And who, who made the second?
Duco?
Duco, we have a motion in a second to read the ordinances, the four ordinances I just called off and to read them by title only and as a group. Roll call.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian? Dillman?
Hi.
Shaffer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Motion carries. Please read, thank you.
Fifteen B, ordinance eighty-eight seventy-six twenty twenty, a zoning ordinance in regards to forty-one September twentieth, David Gross and Rachel Fritz. Fifteen C, ordinance eighty-eight seventy-seven twenty twenty, a zoning ordinance in regards to forty-three September twentieth, Lynette Morris. Ordinance eighty-eight seventy-eight twenty twenty, zoning, zoning ordinance in regards to forty-four September twenty, Oblate Shrines and Renewal Centers Incorporated. Fifteen E, ordinance eighty-eight seventy-nine twenty twenty, a zoning ordinance in regards to forty-five September twentieth, Oblate Shrines and Renewal Centers Incorporated.
Do I hear a motion to approve, uh, ordinance eighty-eight seventy-six, eighty-eight seventy-seven, eighty-eight seventy-eight, eighty-eight seventy-nine?
Shaffer?
Shaffer and who was the second?
Consilla.
Consilla. We have a motion in a second to approve those four ordinances as just read. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Consilla?
Hey, hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman? Dillman?
Hi.
Shaffer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Those four ordinances passed. Unfinished business?
Yeah.
Who's this?
Alderman Ovian, Alderman Ovian, I have one item.
Yes, sir.
Unfinished bit.
Yes, sir.
On June, on, on June sixteenth, uh, Building Commissioner, uh, Jill Heidorn went ahead and sent a letter to, uh, uh, Tony, uh, Dincirgo Land Trust and told him to, to cease and desist on the outdoor, uh, extension of his roof line in order to have outdoor seating. This is from the Round Table Restaurant. On, uh, September twenty-first, I went ahead and took pictures of the way the appearance of the restaurant and the outdoors looked. It is absolutely filthy. And I went ahead and sent it, Mayor, to you, to Anissa McCaswell, to, uh, uh, Assistant Police Chief Matt Iskant, to Johnny Anthony and Joe Hazel. This, uh, this, this operation basically has submitted no architectural plans, This, uh, this, this operation basically has submitted no architectural plans, engineering, and signed and sealed, along with the building permit filled out completely. We have a major problem here. In addition to that, he's open now full-time. He did that starting Sunday. And that's not fair to the rest of the restaurants who are biding by the rule of law set forth by Governor Pritzker.
And, and you are right, and we sent, they were, uh, the staff has been, uh, dealing with this. We have been behind, as you know. But the police were asked, and I believe there's a report on my desk, and we are going to talk tomorrow, and this will be addressed, and it could be, you know, he, he, if, if indeed all the data comes back, it could be that we will, we will certainly deal with it, but it could be that action will be taken as quickly as a day.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Alderman Wiggington?
Yes.
Alderman Wiggington?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor, if you would be so kind, I would like to address you and the council as businessman Roger Wiggington, not Alderman Roger Wiggington. I'm going to segue slightly off of what, uh, Alderman Ovian said. Um, we are in a situation now, uh, which may be a break for the city and county, as well as the state, going into the fourth quarter. We already know we took a big hit in the third quarter with everything that's canceled. We're going to take a bigger hit in the fourth quarter. And it's not going to only affect, it's going to affect everybody in the city, because we brought so many people over here from Missouri to, to shop and have fun and dine and go to Chris Gindamart. Okay, it is what it is. But we're in a situation now, and it's from day one, the playground was not fair. The Big Box Stores could be open, the cannabis stores, the liquor stores, small business, mom and pops, that could run their store with one person could not be open. Target Walmart could be open with, uh, a hundred employees and four hundred people in the store, and they were given a green light. Our restaurants have two weeks maximum. Then after that, they are finished. There, and Alderman Ovian just brought up about the Roundtable. There are other restaurants in Belleville that are open for business. There are a lot of restaurants in these counties that are open for business, and there's a lot of them in the surrounding counties that are open for business. You know who's going to reap the benefits in the fourth quarter is the state of Missouri, because I actually can, can tell you for a fact, people are shop blocking to Missouri to shop and to eat and to, and to have entertainment, while we're sitting holding the bag. And I thank you and the, and the Chamber of Commerce, especially, um, Chairman Turner, for continuing to step up to the plate and send these letters, which are falling on deaf ears. All of a sudden, Southern Illinois is, is, um, is getting left behind as usual. I think it's time, because here's the other thing about it is, if you get a paycheck every week or every two weeks and you've got benefits, what do you care? These people that own these restaurants, it's not only their business, it's their life and their livelihood. We do not have the right to put people out of business and to steal their livelihoods. I've had restaurateurs call me crying on the phone because they will lose everything. Everything. They got the life savings. I've been in this for forty-four years. I can attest to it. They are going to lose everything, while we sit back and say, oh, well, the governor says this, that, and the other thing. Well, somewhere along the line, we got to have some guts and step up to the plate. And what I'm asking and wondering from our city attorney, is it possible that this council, if they would be so inclined, pass a resolution asking the mayor to move forward, listen, these restaurants get it. The poor people have had layers of additional expense outside with heaters, tables, uh, plexiglass, uh, awnings, everything else. They got a, a, another layer, layer of expenses that they can't afford. And now we're saying, well, you know, we're going into peak season, but yeah, you know, you may not be open. And I'm going to, I'm asking Mr. Hunter, is there a resolution, and I don't know, I do not know the legalities. I'm throwing this out to the council and you, Mayor, and, and to our city attorney, if the council would be so inclined, can a resolution be passed by the council directing the mayor to allow restaurants to open under the top of the guidelines, which the restaurants get, they get it. They understand the guidelines. And let these people have a chance to save their businesses, their life savings, you're gonna, I'll tell you what. We're going to answer, well, I'll tell you one thing, I just found out today, the US Bank sixty-two oh one, West Main is closing January second. There's another banking facility, another big building going to be sitting empty. They're going to keep three of the facilities open, but West Belleville's going away. You know, it's like, how many more hits can this city stand, and God love you, Mayor, who's trying to steer, to steer this ship, um, through uncharted waters? But now it's time that this council step up to the plate and back you to let these people earn a living. We do not have the right, and I don't care what anybody says, and I don't care who it is, you do, we do not have the right to steal people's livelihoods and their businesses. So, Mr. Hunter, is there something that we can do as a council to direct the mayor, uh, to allow these restaurants to open?
This is Alderman-
Hold, hold it, hold it. The question was posed to the city attorney. Garrett, are you on there?
Yeah, you, you know, thi- this is something that falls under the jurisdiction of the state and the governor. Um, you don't, you don't overrule the governor. It's up to the, uh, the city whether or not they're going to, to, uh, assist in enforcing it, but ultimately the state can enforce this type of action. But either way, under the Open Meetings Act, you're required to have, if you want to approve a resolution, or really take any action, it has to be expressly identified on the agenda, which tonight's agenda it's not. And if that's something that you want us to, to explore and give you a definitive answer, you know, we could do that, but it's not an action that the city council could take tonight on that topic anyway.
No, thank you. I wanted to plant the seed. I want to get it on the agenda. I want a resolution, because I'm sorry, the restaurants in Northern Illinois are open. The restaurants in Southern Illinois are not open. And as a businessman, I feel the pain, and as a council, and as a mayor, and as the city officials, you should all feel the pain, because you're taking home checks either every week or every two weeks, and you're getting great benefits. And it's, and I don't care, I'm sorry, I don't care what the governor says. You know what? He won't give us a freaking break. We stood up for him, uh, when he got elected, and, and the positivity rate is dropping like a rock in St. Clair County, and he still won't help us out. And I hope he gets this message. So, yes, however-
Mr. Mayor? Uh, this is Alderman Steele.
Yeah, Mary.
Could I in, interject something?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I agree with, uh, with Roger about opening the restaurants, and if we need to do it, we should do it soon, because October will be almost over by our next meeting. And then we'd have to have a special meeting. So, um, I think we need to discuss doing something pretty soon.
Mary, these restaurants will last, they will last two more weeks. They will not last two more weeks.
This is Shae, Shaffer, I agree one hundred percent, one hundred percent.
Mayor, let me-
This is Duco.
Okay, one, one-
Hello, this is Duco. I work outside. Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Carmen.
Hello?
Go ahead.
I said I've been working outside ever since Governor decided we need to be outside. It has gotten so cold, we've got heaters, we've got, you know, plastic, which you're not supposed to have. It's very uncomfortable, and there's a lot of restaurants in St. Clair County that are open, and, and I don't want to rat on anybody, because I, I think it's a great idea. And like you said, we're losing lots of money and having to spend a lot more money for less customers than ever, because we have to have heaters, and we have to have fans, and we have to have plastic. It's ridiculous. It needs to be taken care of soon, because it's going to get so cold, we, nobody's going to be outside.
Thank you, Carmen.
Thank you.
This is Ald, and I'd like to, I'd like to go ahead and bring something to everyone's attention. Uh, this weekend, in the city of Palomville, they're going to go ahead and close Main Street. Every restaurant that's on Main Street will go ahead and put up tables. They're going to block off the street. They're going to go ahead and open it up from three o'clock until ten o'clock. That's Friday and Saturday, and from three o'clock until eight o'clock on Sunday. It's going to be a warm weekend. So, maybe we should go ahead and talk to the restaurant owners. Let's, let's help them out a little bit.
Well, we already have. I mean, if, if the weather's nice, they have a lot of dining down there, downtown, and the other places that have requested dining on their property, we've granted all of them. I mean, the problem is what everybody's hearing, and I feel it too, is the extreme cold weather. But we have contacted, uh, the governor, uh, the other mayors have. Um, we have been speaking up. We continue to. But, you know, I think Garrett's- I think Garrett's going to have to do a little research, and hopefully maybe we'll see some action here quickly, but I, I, I have a question about just going against the state. Uh, there could be some reperc- I mean, I know it's terrible. Don't get me wrong. I know it's terrible. I fielded calls all day today. But it, it's hard to say that we can just recommend going against the state government. There's a some, there's definite repercussions potentially for that, and I, I just, I want to talk to the city attorney, and I want to make sure we know what we're getting into, and that we go, don't go into that blindly. But I'm still hopeful in the next-
Mayor, Mayor, and what you said, Mayor, Mayor, what you said about people shopping downtown, I mean, eating downtown. Mayor, they're not even covering their overheads. It's impossible. These people are sitting on big rents and big mortgages and big improvements. The people they've got down there, they're lucky if they're paying their utilities with the, the dining that they've got down there. So, no, they're not rolling in, in those. Uh, they're so far behind, it's going to take them months to catch up. And that's the, that's the realism of the whole situation. Restaurants can only make their money on volume. They got to make their money on volume. The money's in the liquor. They are not doing volume business. So, that's why, I'm sorry, I could not sit by any longer, because it's going to affect the entire city. It's going to affect how we run the city. And if, we have to make a, a proposal to bring a, a special session, it may be a week, because two weeks, weeks is too long. We absolutely cannot wait two weeks.
I, I don't disagree with that, but I think the tur, city attorney can get some, uh, uh, some thoughts to this and get a memo out, maybe by tomorrow to all of you, or as soon as he can. And, and then we can decide, but I'm, I'm, I'll just tell you. Uh, he and I did not talk today, but I'm very cautious about, in a sense, um, I, I hear everything you're saying.
You know, the fact of the matter is, we, the fact of the matter is, we got a gun being held to our head. You know, if we don't play the game, then we get shot in the head.
Well, the, the-
And, and you know what? Everybody at the council, they know, know exactly what I'm saying, and they agree.
The fact of the-
If you don't play the game, both.
The fact of the matter of it is-
Here, this is Duco.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think all of the mayors in all of the eight counties will all agree that the restaurants need to be open. It's way too cold to be sitting outside with your coats on, and people are getting food to go, and you're right. The sales, where you make the money is in the liquor. If they're getting food to go, they're not buying liquor. That's where your major profits are coming from.
Thank you.
I think everybody will agree, all the counties will agree, not just St. Clair County.
No, Alderman Elmore, if I could have a second. Um, everything they've said, I just agree with, and I, I, it was very well said. Um, Alderman Duco, I, I understand what you're saying about the county. That is probably part of our problem in St. Clair County and Belleville, is that some of these counties are not listening to the governor.
Right.
And that's what's so frustrating, and I know Mayor Eckert is trying everything he can possibly do without blatantly doing what some of these counties and communities are doing away from Belleville, and I mean, far away from Belleville. But we're worried about them losing their licenses, their liquor licenses, and being forced to close. Well, you know what happens if we don't do this? They're going to close. So it's a lose-lose, and the only shot we've got is to let them open up with very sincere, ex, ex, distinct guidelines, and I'm in favor of this a hundred percent as well. And I think, uh, I have a question for, uh, Hunter, as soon as we could have a meeting. I don't think we can have a meeting before this weekend, but maybe Friday, uh-
You can, you can have a meeting with forty-eight hours' notice, but we, we got to make sure that we have the advice. I, I, Garrett and I will do our best to try to talk tomorrow. But folks, I'm going to tell you, we got to be careful before we, I, I understand what all of you are saying, and I am very, very conscious of this, and I worry about the small businesses. But we got to, we got to listen to the attorney and let him research this quickly, because I don't want to just go wrong, rogue. Two wrongs don't make a right, and, and I don't want to see us-
No, but, but, but people's livelihoods, the people's livelihoods.
I, I agree.
That makes a right.
Roger, I agree, but once again, I, I, I'm hoping, you know, we had, it really hit, it really hit last weekend, because the weather was miserable. Somebody said it a minute ago, the weather this weekend is supposed to be much better. I've heard from many of them-
Absolutely.
When the, when the we, and I know we got to, we got to get off this, because the weather's not going to be good forever. This weekend, it happens to look good. But I will tell you, I've heard from many of them that if the weather's decent, they do very well outside. You know, several of them have told me they've done extremely well. And, and, um, let's, let's, let Garrett and I talk. If we, if we, if, if he agrees, we can, we can, there's some action to take. We will, we will notify you all by email, and then we will call a meeting. We can call a meeting with forty-eight hours' notice.
If we possibly call a special meeting one week from today, once you and the city attorney get together, time is of the essence.
Roger, if we're going to do it, I, I wouldn't wait for a week. I mean, let's see, let's just see, let's take the advice of the attorney. Let me talk with him tomorrow, and, and then we will get a memo out to all of you, and then you can tell me after you get his recommendation, uh, do you still want to call for a special meeting? So let me, let me meet with him or talk to him tomorrow, and then we will go from there.
I'm hoping for a meeting this Thursday.
What's that?
I, I'm hoping for a meeting this Thursday is what my fingers are crossed for.
It's not impossible, but let's, uh, let's, first of all, without, um, let, let's, let me, let me talk to Garrett, and then we will share it in a memo to you all, uh, as to his recommendation to us about what the possible con- consequences could be. You know, we, I, I'm certainly interested in helping our businesses, and I certainly have sent every letter, and I've corresponded with everybody on every one of the weekly meetings with the mayors throughout St. Clair County. But I can tell you, um, we're all, we, we don't want to, uh, we, we want to do this carefully, and I want to get Garrett's advice before we go against the state of Illinois and the governor's ruling. So let's, let's give us a-
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. In the meantime, we're going to, the weather this weekend, Friday, it's seventy-seven degrees. Saturday, it's eighty. Sunday, it's seventy-eight. Let's barricade downtown streets, let the restaurants open.
Okay.
Barricade parking lots where restaurants are, and let them open up.
Ra- Ra- Rafi, Rafi, we've got the streets closed downtown, and, and, and you got to think about this.
They are barricaded.
They're all barricaded already, and, and if we close any more of Main Street off, then you're not taking into consideration the other businesses, and, and you totally block off their stores from not only the side, but in some cases, then the front. And, and, and I think some of you know what I'm talking about. So I, I think we've taken a good stance on trying to help Fars Room. We just need this nice weather that's predicted, and I think they're going to have a great weekend. Uh, but I do see if the weekend weather changes after Sunday, then what do we do next? So let me talk to Garrett, but we don't need to close off anything else. Do you think, Jenny? We, we've got plenty of streets closed off.
We certainly can't close the parking lots.
They, they don't, they don't have it-
Rafi, that's the one thing, that's the one thing I've heard the restaurants compliment us on, is our willingness to block off the streets.
And, and-
That have been blocked off for months.
If, if we-
We're doing it, Rafi.
Right, we're doing it. And if we closed off anything more, they wouldn't have the staff or the kitchens to handle it. And, and if we're just going to turn it-
They're very happy.
If we're going to turn it into just a, a drinking ordeal, then we're going totally against the COVID-nineteen of gathering in a big party-like atmosphere, and then we're going to be back to where we're going to be contributing to the spread of COVID, and Lard knows we don't need to do that. Who knows what the fall and winter's going to bring already? So let's, don't be like, the other county areas who haven't abided by it, and we've all heard, they are, their numbers are much worse than ours. Their positivity rates in some of these neighboring towns and, and counties, I, I wouldn't want their numbers, because somebody's going to get sick and die that they're going to all know real soon, too. So let's, let's, don't lose our heads. I agree with you. It's very concerning, but we have to stay calm. We have to be the big people in the room, and we have to get the facts before we rush out and make a decision. So I will talk to Garrett tomorrow, and we'll, we'll get back with you, and then if we need to have a special meeting, uh, we'll have a special meeting. Okay, that takes care of unfinished business. We have miscellaneous and new business.
No, Mayor, 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 Alderman Randall.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, I'm going to switch gears for just a second. I want to move, um-
Yeah, uh, I'm going to switch gears for just a second, I want to move, uh, back to the issue of Home Field Energy and the letter that was sent out, there's been a lot of, um, chatter, I guess, on social media regarding the rates there, and I'm hoping that Jamie can speak to this. I think a lot of people are confused when they look at their bill between electric delivery by Amarin and electric supply by Home Field Energy, because they're looking at the Home Field Energy supply of, uh, point zero five four nine six, uh, per kilowatt hour versus the electrical delivery from Amarin at point zero four nine seven. And then you've got the letter where Home Field Supply is saying that, uh, or Home Field Energy is saying that the new competitive fixed rate will be point zero four two nine per kilowatt hour guaranteed until December twenty-twenty-two. Um, that being the case, versus their current rate, that seems like an almost a twenty-two percent reduction uh, between, uh, what they're currently quoting us and what they're proposing that will be guaranteed till December. So, I'm hoping that Jamie can provide some clarification, because there's a lot of stuff going on in social media, uh, sites where people are taking advice from people who I don't believe know what they're talking about.
Jamie, are you prepared to address this now, or do you need some time to look into it?
Um, I, I can address it a little bit, but if there's further questions, I can, I can get back to people tomorrow, but, um, as most of you probably remember, it was back in June, we actually, um, the consortium, all of the municipalities who participate in the electric aggregation bid out for the new term again, um, which starts in December, January of this coming year. Um, so that is why the rate we are at now, that's over the five cents that you just quoted, Alderman Randall, that was for the last contract that's getting ready to end soon. So, yes, the market has changed dramatically since that was originally bid, and prices have come down significantly. So, when we bid it in June, these rates are going down significantly from what, um, what residents were paying previously.
Alderman Randall?
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay. Alrighty, and now I'd like to go on to motor fuel claims in the amount of three thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and nine cents. Do I hear a motion?
Steele?
We have motion from.
Give me a second.
Steele and Schaefer to pay the motor fuel claims, any questions? Roll call.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Husa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wigginton?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Kinsella?
Hi.
Motion carries. Okay, I will get with Garrett, uh, first thing in the morning. At this time, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes.
Hey, were you going to bring up and discuss the Jack Schmidt property real quick?
No, no, not tonight, I talked to Garrett, and, uh, we're still getting a little bit of information, and I'll, I will, we're following up on that, and, uh, he and I will talk again tomorrow, and hopefully this will be resolved.
All right, thanks.
Steele, motion to adjourn.
Motion by Steele.
Rothweiler, second.
Second by Rothweiler, any, anybody have a problem with adjournment? Roll call.
Duco?
Hi.
Husa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Ken? Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wigginton?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Kinsella?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you. Got that off?